Meeting of the planning commission. To order is October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is seven oh one P M. We're meeting via Zoom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much. Everybody be seated. We'll move on to roll call of officers, missions.
Joe Palmer.
President.
Kevin Kissel.
President.
Gerald Grazeck. Is he absent or excused?
I believe he's absent. Haven't heard anything from him.
And I know Arturo's absent. I am here. Charles Persinger.
Present.
Ross Laduka. Absent or excused?
He is absent without excuse.
And Tracy is here. Hey, correct Tracy with the echo?
That would be correct. The second echo was not me.
And then I see Jacob Root, Liz Gunnan. Anybody else here? Does it? Who's three, one, three, six, two, two, five, nine, five, three?
That's me.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, he does audio.
There was anybody else? Alright.
Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yeah, I bought three brand new cameras with audio and they all took crap, so hello.
I'm sorry.
I'm done. You guys get what you get.
It's good enough, Joe. It's good enough.
We'll move on. If anybody's had a chance to look over the minutes, little last meeting, was approval of the previous minutes?
I saw the minutes and I thought they were excellent. We leave them just the way they are.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes.
I will support that motion.
We have a motion, we have a support. Any discussion? All those in favor signify with an eye. All those opposed signify with an A. Motion carried. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything, any thing to say about the agenda? Want to make any changes? Otherwise, it'll record as being the, uh, being the same. Move on to old business.
We don't have to move and, and, uh, and do all that stuff because it's on the list. Approval of the agenda moved by.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We got a motion?
Second?
Anybody, anybody, it's a second to that motion?
To approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Yeah, I have it. It is approved. Move on to old business. We have nothing in our old business, so move on to new business. We have conceptual review. For two zero one seven. Fourth Street. Body art facility. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, thanks Kevin. I assume you all can see my screen?
Yep.
Yes, I can.
Okay. So again, this is for conceptual review only at this point, so there will be no action done by the planning commission. Um, the proposal is a body art facility, which is the, determine the zoning ordinance for a tattoo parlor. The site was previously used as a pharmacy and the proposed body art facility occupy the ground floor of the existing building. So the site is one of three units in an existing building on the corner of Fort and Southfield. The entire site is about point one three acres when the property is about fifteen hundred square feet in floor area. The site, um, fronts, the entrance is on Front Street and then has vehicular access via McKinley Street in the back. There's a twenty foot sidewalk along Fort Street and a total of six parking spaces in the back for the entire building. Um, presumably two for each unit. There are also existing raised planter boxes in the front of the building with four existing trees. For a master plan, future land use classification, the, the classification is downtown commercial. And the proposed tattoo parlor is consistent with this designation. The site is zone central business district and the use is permitted after special land use approval in the district. All neighboring properties are central business district other than, um, the right of way. And here is the site plan document that was provided for this review. For dimensional standards, the existing building meets. I'm sorry. The existing building meets all of the dimensional standards of the ordinance, so, um, there's nothing to be addressed there for building design. Um, the current building meets all standards for building design, which is rare when we have an existing building.
I'm sorry, Liz. Could you give me a favor and scroll up to the building again, please? Just for a second? I just want to picture it. Okay, that's where I thought it was. Great.
It isn't actually one of these building. It's, it's across Southfield from.
Right, it used to be the pharmacy, so, uh, yeah, I got you. Thank you.
So, um, the existing building does meet all of the ordinance standards, um, so there is nothing to be addressed there. For preservation of natural features, there are no significant features to preserve, however, the existing trees and the raised planter boxes will remain. Sidewalks, pedestrian and bicycle circulation, there's the existing twenty foot sidewalk in front of the building along Fort. Um, and the sidewalk appears to be in good condition. For parking. For a service establishment, the, um, the requirements are based on gross floor area. So, um, gross leasable floor area, so the calculations yield a requirement of two spaces. The, um. There's, there are two spaces designated for this unit in the back, so the, um, the site currently needs parking requirements. For the parking area type B, um, generally meets all requirements. And there, oftentimes, the big one is that there are, is residential property abutting, but in this case there isn't. So there is nothing to be addressed here. For barrier free parking, um, the space in the back, um, is only about twenty feet wide. And there are two existing spaces, so this makes the provision of barrier free spaces impossible with the dimension requirements for barrier free parking spaces. For loading, the size of the building does not, is small enough that it does not require a loading space, so nothing to be addressed here. Access driveways and vehicular circulation, um, these apply to the main traffic routes in the city. And there is no vehicular access to the site from the, from these routes. The, um, you access the, the site, um, in your vehicle via McKinley. So the standards of this section do not apply. Emergency vehicle access, um, they can access the building via Fort or McKinley. And the police department has indicated that it has no concerns with the proposal. There are no new streets proposed for the project. For landscaping, screening and open space. Everything has been met, other than, um, there's the ten foot green belt requirement in the front. Um, however, the current configuration is from the curb where it meets Fort Street to the building is completely paved. But there are the two eight foot wide planter boxes in front of the building to determine that that standard is met as possible. All other standards for landscaping have meet the thirty percent redevelopment standard. Only thing we need yet is a trash management plan for the proposed operation. Soil erosion control is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. For utilities, have our standard, um, conditions for utilities here, um, based on engineering comments. Stormwater management is also under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. For lighting, there is existing lighting on the front of the building and not appear that new lighting is proposed. Um, so in this case, if new lighting is proposed, then the applicant would need to provide those manufacturer specifications. Um, to ensure that they meet ordinance standards. For noise, there's no indication of adverse noise impacts anticipated from the development. Mechanical equipment, there is existing ground mounted mechanical equipment in the back that is not screened. If it were to be replaced, then it would need to be screened in accordance with ordinance requirements. For signs, signs, um, are permitted by the building department. And so when it gets to the building department, um, review, signs would be addressed then. Hazardous materials or waste, um, the proposed use is expected to generate some quantity of hazardous materials or waste. And tattoo parlors are regulated by the county. Um, so in this case, we would ask for documentation of compliance with county, state and federal standards for storage use and handling and disposal. Site design standards for use is permitted after special approval. There's only one standard, and that is that it cannot be within a thousand feet of another body art facility. There do not, there are no other facilities within a thousand feet. For other agency reviews, um, just to secure any other appropriate agency reviews as needed. And there are no variances, um, anticipated from the proposal. For findings, um. As a conceptual review, this is substantially in compliance with the site plan review requirements. We have a list of all the conditions of approval for the applicant here. And the next step would be for the applicant to submit a full site plan. And then to the next review would be full site plan review and the special land use review. Um, the architect or design professional is on the call and I believe would answer any other questions as well.
Okay, are there any questions for Liz?
I might have one. Liz. The green belt thing, uh, so those planter trees constitute part of the green belt then? Because I know there's a lot of business up and down Ford Street that are all cement and they have planter tree boxes. So we considering that just for future reference too, you know?
Right, I mean, it, it is technically a ground cover even though it's raised, so yes. It does count.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Liz?
Yeah, if I might, I realize that it's a small building and I know there's only two parking spots behind it. But there's the, it meets compliance, it's only four spots.
It's just two, it's because, um, it's based on the requirements for, uh, and its establishment like this. There, it's categorized as a service establishment and it's based on, I think, per a thousand square feet. So, um, that it just yields two, two spaces required.
They'll be using the dollar store parking lot, I'm assuming, okay.
Alright. And I'm not sure how many, how many, um. You know, clients they would have at one time.
Just depends on, yeah, how many artists, how many, yeah, that all depends on what they set up, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Liz? Okay, is the, the, you said the architect was here, Liz?
Yes, Mr. Root.
Mr. Root. Are you available to talk to us?
Certainly, so the applicant is essentially reoccupying the existing pharmacy. He's doing some interior painting. Um, the conditions of the approval, uh, he intends to meet. Uh, we'll get a resubmitting in to get to the next step, uh, probably by this Friday. Uh, and look forward to doing business in the city. Uh, he's excited, so. Um, I think that if she, if Liz scrolls down a little, you can see the site plan that we sent. Um, and, um, I'm happy to answer any further questions regarding the plan.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Root? Any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Joe.
John Myers.
John, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Mr. Root, are, are, is the client planning on renting, leasing or purchasing this unit?
So he has a, he's leasing that particular tenant space.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? There are none? Liz, you said this is just, uh, for, uh, formality? No, there's not, nothing for us to do tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so we wish, uh, the tenant good luck in, in getting everything ready for you for next, for next month? Are they gonna be back, back before us?
Yes.
Okay. So good luck to you, Mr. Root. In getting everything together for her.
Thank you much, and we will be back in, we'll get our submittal in and we will be back in next month.
We'll see you in November.
Mr. Root?
Yes, sir.
This, this is John Myers, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm again the building official. If you need any assistance or information from my office or my staff, please don't hesitate to get ahold of us.
We will certainly do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to policy review and discussion. Sure, anything there? Nothing else, we'll move on to education and training. That's, uh, City October Planning Report.
Making you dizzy?
Yep.
Um, so there are a couple, couple relevant items this month. Um, first one is about, about parks and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in the state of Michigan. Um, since with COVID, people have been accessing parks and using parks a lot more. Um, and this, the MDNR has, um, made, recently made equity a core land management principle. So that's a pretty interesting article if you're interested in, in parks. Um, federal housing bill, this is also pretty big. There are new, there's new support and incentives for planning. Um, this is one of the first federal programs that's directly, you're supposed to directly empower planners. And marks an opportunity for planners to demonstrate leaders and finding. Um, solutions that will expand the nation's housing supply, um, address affordability crisis and tackle social equity challenges. So potentially funding opportunities available in the future. And this especially for housing. Um, for legal things, the Michigan Court of Appeals, um, recently upheld a floodplain regulation in a mobile home park. So that potentially be relevant to Lincoln Park, um, but I don't believe that the mobile home park is in a floodplain. Yes.
Um, just for reference. The Michigan Appeals Court upheld the floodplain.
Yes.
Recently, uh, one, they have now changed, um, the. Design and setback in floodplains for mobile home parks. And it goes into effect in our city under the FEMA and, and Michigan floodplains. Uh, on the reading and the approval of the council this coming Monday. Uh, and number two, we have one trailer park that is in the floodplains. That it will affect off of, just on the other side of the creek from the five hundred. Five hundred Southfield DPS complex. So this would affect us.
Yes.
There are new changes in floodplain, uh, designs, uh, that will go into a certification for the city. Once the council, uh, approves that, potentially on Monday night, uh, will also change that dynamics. Uh, based on that, uh, a court, um, overriding and holding, uh, mobile home parks accountable.
Yes, that's very interesting. Also, the, um, the new floodplain maps for the city will be going into effect at the end of this month.
And that, that floodplain map is also the modifications to this and to other guidelines.
Yes.
It will begin with that floodplain policy. Which has to be activated in the city by the state and by, by floodplain rules by, I believe the number is October twenty-one, is that right?
Yes.
So that's why it will go on council on Monday.
Thank you for adding information there. Um, and then finally, the, um, there is a, an offering through the American Planning Association. There's, um, a plan checklist almost, um, that's called Building Resiliency Through Plan Integration. And they're offering it for free, um, that it's a, um, basically a checklist to see if your documents are, um, compatible. And not conflicting. So that could be something that could be useful as well. Then conferences, there is the, um, Michigan Downtown Association Annual Conference that is November fourth and fifth. Um, there's details about that here. And then the, um, Planning Conference, Michigan Association of Planning Conference, we talked about last month is at the end of this month. If people are still interested in applying you, or in registering, you still can. So that is all for this.
Liz, can I repeat it one more time? Can you scroll back down to that listing?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is there, if I may ask a question, is there anybody that is present tonight? That would be willing to take that free class and be a part of documentation and all the powerpoints that they provide? And present it back to us as a commission? Because it will be relevant to our future building plans and, and our training in our city. Because we are a built out, how residential community that has vacant spaces and needs to reevaluate how we process it. Number two, would there be anybody on our commission tonight that would be willing to commit to, uh, being a part of the Downtown Association Conference this year? As a representative of the city of Lincoln Parks Commission, uh, for planning commission? And then bring that information back to us. So I'm asking for a couple homework assignments from one or two people, three people to make us more viable as a commission. Because in the next segment, if it's not Leah, Liz, it will be me. Uh, we have, uh, some more broader pictures that you guys need to be aware of going forward in the city. So I thought maybe there'd be somebody that would, uh, make a, a commitment to being a student again in one of these two ideas. In the ideas and the conference, that would be a great help to the conference. It'd be a great help to our commission. And it would be a great asset to the city going forward with that kind of knowledge in our pocket.
Okay, is anybody else, is anybody want to take the class?
When is this class?
Liz, you know when this, um, idea APA classes?
Yes, it is the last, it's the last, um, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of October. But let me pull up my calendar.
Online, in person?
Um, it is virtual, so you can attend, you know, when it, when you.
Online.
When you.
Or anytime.
Right, and then if you, they know, say you're working during the day, all the sessions are recorded, so you can watch them at your leisure. I'll be attending and will, you know, attend sessions as I can throughout the workday. So it is October twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth.
And which one is that? Is that the downtown one?
No.
No, that's the other one. The pass, oh, okay.
Do we have it? Do we have one? Do we have two takers? One or two takers?
I'm occupied, I can't do it, so.
It's, it's virtual, that means you get to move and take it at your own leisure once you're in, on board.
I'm having surgery on the twenty ninth, twenty eighth, twenty eighth, so I will be unavailable.
That will make you unavailable.
Yes.
Going to, going twice, going three times, we got three takers.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
How long does each one of these take? How long will it take for all three days?
Well, due to the fact that it's virtual and you can do them at your leisure, you could do it over a week's period of time. Even if you only went to three classes, one each day, you could finish the rest of the classes on, over the next three to five days, six days, eight days.
And the sessions are usually an hour to an hour and a half long.
Correct.
So how long, three days and complete, or how long will it take to take care of all this, Liz?
Um, it's somewhat your decision, so, you know, there are sessions all day, but you would pick what you're interested in.
And, and so if you want, uh, if, if it would help this commission. Liz and I would look at the agenda of checklist of classes and recommend what we think might be prudent to the infrastructure system of a bedroom community that we live in. And that means we can give you a checklist of classes, you might want to benefit the knowledge back to the commission. Instead of having to watch them all and not knowing which one to pick.
Do you need an answer immediately, or can we get back with you in the next day or two?
Yeah, you can get back to Liz the next day or two.
Yeah, I'll send out a link to the, um, the conference brochure, so you can take a look at, um, what, what the session does. They're already, they're already planned.
And if there's anybody interested in going to the Downtown Association, I would be more than willing to, to suggest that there's some kind of financial support for paying for that conference for you.
I would be interested in that.
Minute I begin to look for some revenue, whether it comes out of our building department or some other fund, um, or our Liz's lunch money. But we'll figure that out.
Liz's lunch money?
I don't know if I want to. We'll talk later.
Alright.
Okay.
Any other takers? On once? Twice? Move on, Liz.
Move on to the reports from, uh, from departments and other boards and commissions?
Liz, you have your letter?
I do have one, um. You all this afternoon should have received an email from Carl Malish, the economic direct, economic development director. Is that correct? Okay, so I'm not, I'm not going to reread the entire letter, it's pretty lengthy. But, um, it's mostly to make, make you all aware of the Southfield Corridor Study that, um, kicked off last week. The, and, um, importantly, the, um, the proposal includes, um, meeting with. Um, well, first of all, the, the project is between, um, City of Lincoln Park and E-course. And it's studying the Southfield Corridor from where it starts at the Allen Park border all the way to the Detroit Riverfront. So, um, part of the process will be having some joint meetings with, um, Lincoln Park's Planning Commission and Council. As well as, um, E-course's Planning Commission and Council. So there will be three of those total meetings throughout the process over the next six or seven months. Um, the first one will likely be in early December. So that would be, um, a separate meeting from the regular, our regular meeting. Um, but a lot of it will be getting input from, from the boards and councils about what we want to see on the Southfield Corridor. Does anybody have any questions of that, about that? Now, we don't have set dates yet since it's just starting. But that, that information will be coming in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any questions?
Let me clarify for you. You can read the article. Uh, it's worth reading, it's rather lengthy, but let me give you a, a, the second side of the synopsis of it. The EDC Director is a bit concerned that before this study goes through. And a concluded resolution of the Southfield, um, Parkway Boulevard, whatever they call this thing, uh, gets done. Multiple businesses will have applied to the City Planning Commission and have asked for the right to buy, purchase and operate new businesses. AKA, from my window through, uh. Lee, uh, Liz's window. Up to Carl's window, um, there's right now a handful of about four new businesses on that street. That are asking for auto car sales ships, uh, uh, used cars dealerships. I, when I think I said that two, uh, two days ago in a meeting, I think, um, what hair Carl had left came out of his head. Um, because he's concerned that we have this designed study going on of this corridor. And before it gets completed, some of the major pieces on that corridor may have been filled by new and new developing businesses. That may or may not be in conjunction with what may or may not be part of the planning, the corridors study session. So I know if he had his way, we've had this conversation even as of today. And on Tuesday, both Liz and I, uh, pretty strongly agree, it's not going to be an effective, uh, solution. But it has been. are pretty strongly agree it's not going to be an effective, uh, solution, but it has been in our development meeting where it belongs, it has been discussed about putting on a memoratorium on buildings and businesses on Southfield. Is that, would that be correct, Liz?
Correct, that it was discussed.
So we've discussed it. Liz did some homework. I did some homework. I took what she put together. I created a, a further investigation of it. We've presented it to Carl, and then I followed it up with an interview, uh, on this conversation with the city attorney, and he kind of agrees pretty quickly without me giving him the details of our study, that this might be a pretty dangerous and risky business to try to shut out businesses while we're in a process of doing an assessed study. So as, as this commission has such an important role, I think Carl just wants you to be fully aware that there is a plan to evaluate this corridor while businesses are trying to consider opening on it. And, and I think that's what his article is trying to, to invite you to be conscientiously aware as, as over the next couple of months, you will not be, I will, you will not be surprised of seeing more requests like you saw in September where there's one building and a man wants to put an auto sale, and you granted that one. In Au, in August, you denied him. In September, you granted it. And now I can tell you, there is a property very, right next to it who is now being, trying to be purchased, and in the purchase, it's designed to put another used auto development on that property. So I think that's kind of making the EDC director concerned that he didn't have enough speed to get this study done. Um, and he'd want to make sure that all of you are conscientiously aware that that's going to take place even while you do your responsibility for the city as a planning commission assessment for every case that comes to your door.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's the, that would be maybe a, an inside conversation storyline. Did I miscommunicate any of that, Liz?
No.
All right, so I, I just wanted you to have a bigger picture. Uh, Liz gave you the details. I gave you the commentary.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Was that a typo, typo that, uh, Carl said about, is it a hundred and seven million dollars or a hundred and seven dollars? In the email?
It wouldn't be a hundred and seven.
One, zero, seven dollars, a hundred and seven dollars or a hundred?
I thought it was a hundred and seven thousand.
I think it's a hundred and seven thousand.
Okay.
Cause a hundred and seven dollars wouldn't buy you, me buying your lunch for you anymore.
Nobody buys a lunch anyways. We're all volunteers.
Oh yeah, I forgot.
I have another question. Well, I guess if we're done with that, on our board, with, is there an appeal, John, on the dangerous building for the last meeting we had with denying the homeowner or the renter on that property, or what's going on with that?
He rescinded his appeal.
Oh, he did?
We had a massive conversation, and he decided it would be best at this point if he rescinded his appeal.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I have nothing else from the dangerous building, everyone.
Okay. Um, public comments? Anybody from the public here? If not, we'll move on to the comments from planning commissioners. Anybody got any comments from the planning commissioners?
Just that I see the construction, if, if I may, the construction by over, uh, Emmons and Dix is going well, it, it appears, and Southfield and Lafayette, they, they, they appear to be getting ready to build quickly because of the weather, which is good.
The Emmett's property is a car wash, and right now they are in the Wayne County supervision by our city engineer. And they will be, um, as you can see, if you haven't seen it ever happen before, it's a pretty creative, uh, guideline, but where their stackables are going to be on this property, they have to put a five hundred and ninety thousand gallon retention pond underneath it. So if you look at the property right now, you'll see all these half-mooned orange domes.
Yep.
Right now, that's what they're getting ready under the supervision of Hennessy, our engineer, watching and making sure that the, uh, sewer, the stormwater, and the water connections with Wayne County are properly installed. And then we'll go to the building department for concrete foundations and footings for the actual building. On the Lafayette property, uh, they've reversed the opposite. They will not get to Hennessy until they make all the screen walls and footers and foundational walls of all the buildings in place first. Once they put those in, then Hennessy will take over, making sure the curbs, water retention, and drive, and roadways are properly installed as they build vertical. So those are the two positions that those are in. But if you ever seen it happen, it's a pretty cool idea, and, uh, that's where they're at.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
So, and I see him doing the construction at Southfield and Lafayette for the Taco Bell, huh?
That is correct, and I, all the foundation, uh, for the wall and for the building are now in place.
Cool. Everybody else? I question?
I got a question. I got a question. Last meeting, we discussed, uh, removing a couple members. If anything, come with us.
Yes.
If they
The
Go ahead, John.
The, we submitted two of them, uh, to the city council as a resolution. And right before last month's last city council, the mayor, uh, deemed necessary to take it off the agenda. Uh, I believe he would like to take their dismissal from our commission from another mythology. Instead of it being a formal, uh, dismissal from our board to the council for resolution, I believe he'd rather speak with them in person and find a, a more suitable way for their dismissal and letter of resignation.
Yeah, he did call me in that regards. So.
One of them. We don't even know who the heck she is.
Yeah.
I have, I have a comment, man, also. I'm glad Chuck brought that up because I thought it was our, as our planning commission, that we put that forth for the council to approve that. How can they change that? If we approve and want them removed from the board, how can they go above and beyond what we recommend for that, Mr. Myers?
Um, I, I, it's beyond my jurisdiction to answer that question.
Who would be able to answer that for me besides the mayor?
Possibly the city manager and possibly the keeper of the records, which would be the city clerk.
Well, I know he had something. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
My understanding, talking to the mayor, that Ms. Hill was going to resign, and he was trying to get ahold of Ms. Bionas, get him to do the same thing.
So I'm just saying, so what Joe's asking us, did we do the right thing, and was that our, our right to do that protocol? And the answer is yes.
Yes.
But council has the right to make other resolutions and, and make decisions beyond our resolution. So at this point, it hasn't gone to the council under the request that the mayor would like to try another method before making it an enforcement.
Yep, that's exactly what he told me on the phone.
But I don't, I'm kind of confused. What's the purpose of that? Because we've got members that have not even shown up for a couple of years. Well, we can get other people on, on the board here. It's, 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 it's not going properly.
It's, the timetable's involved. He's got, there's certain things he's gotta do either way. He's gotta do them. And he's just, he's trying to shorten the, the timeframe involved by having them simply resign.
Yeah, but, okay, Mr. Chairman, that's my point, is we've tried to contact these people. They don't contact us back and say they want to be here. And we give them that chance. What if they decide that they want to stay on? And then they don't show up again for a couple of years. That's my point. How do we override that?
I understand your point. The mayor's wanting to appoint us to be here. He wants to do things a certain way. Gotta allow him the chance to do that.
No, and I understand.
We can't override the mayor.
I say that again, I'm sorry.
We cannot override the mayor.
So there's no sense in us doing what we do. We just try what we can do for our diligence and then go through the council and mayor.
But he's, he's, he's trying to, to speed it up because he's, there's cert, I can't remember exactly what he said, because I was heading into another meeting at the time.
Sure.
But, uh, it's by doing what he's doing, he's hoping to speed the process up.
Yeah, because if they resign, we don't have to go through the lengthy process.
Right.
That's true.
Exactly.
If you can get a, a letter of resignation from, we don't have to go through all the
It never has, it never has to go to council if you guys do it that way.
Right, absolutely.
And it makes
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And they're, they're not getting, uh, they're not being shamed at council by having their name brought up.
Yeah, yeah.
To be removed from the committee.
Yes, that's true.
I respect that. I do respect that, but my point, I guess, is, is if we keep them, we're, we, we have a chance to get a couple other people on this planning commission. And I know the respect to do that. I understand that, especially with Gerald. The other person, which we never heard of, and then the other person that doesn't even show up or call, it's kind of disrespectful to us as the planning commission, which we've been doing our diligence, what we've got to go on.
Yep. I agree with what you're saying. I don't believe it is disrespectful to us at all. I think the mayor's just trying to be respectful to them and try to speed up the process.
Mr. Chairman, does he have a timeframe on this at all, or no?
I talked to him.
We brought that up?
I have, I have not heard of a timeframe on it at all.
Okay. It just seems like it's getting drawn out longer and longer, that's all. Getting frustrating.
Gerald said he was gonna resign anyway, didn't he?
Who's that?
Gerald.
His, his wasn't brought, is it, is it one of the two that's been brought up?
No, it isn't, but he said he was going to because
I think, yeah, I think he said that.
Yeah, well, that's up to him.
Yeah.
He's put a lot of time in.
It's, it's giving him, it's allowing him to exit in his, in his way.
Absolutely.
I agree with that. I think that's awesome.
Yeah.
Is anybody else, anybody comments? Hearing none? Uh, I'd like to just wish everybody, uh, happy Halloween.
Oh, we're gonna move to adjourn?
And we'll move, we'll accept the movement to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a more
One more second, okay?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman?
What's up?
I want to let you know that Ross Alduka showed up seven, at fourteen minutes after the meeting began. So he's been sitting in the desk with me from the beginning of Leah's
Hi, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Ross.
But you can assign for yourself if you'd like him to be absent or present.
I think he's present.
Well, I noted him as present fifteen minutes late.
There you go.
There you go.
And then Meyer, I'll drop off the, the doc. I'll scan it, and then I'll drop it off like I have been at lunch tomorrow.
You're a gentleman and a scholar.
Oh, you lie well.
Have a good one, guys.
Thanks. Take care. Be safe. Be careful. Happy Halloween and to all a good fright.